The city council work session for November 7th. And I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Anybody?
Thank you. We have a little bit of council business and then we'll get into the presentation. Consent calendar. Any items on consent calendar, please? Councilor Riesman?
One question for the city manager and then a correction in the minutes. Mr. Danici, page nine. Actually, in the minutes. Very last sentence on the page reads, "Mr. Danici recommended amending the second resolves regarding the amount to come from our SDC funds, being $200,000 not $500,000." Just wondering if that recommendation was ever acted upon. Is that taken care of?
That certainly is the matter which we're addressing by implementing the resolution. Well, I don't know if the city actually takes it by the council. But fine, we'll talk to them in a few seconds.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I believe, yes, I believe the RCA or the resolution was corrected to show that.
Corrected, man. Fantastic. Thank you.
Go ahead. It's okay. No worries.
Thank you. Page 11, the motion there. Just wondering about the numbers. Motion carried, six yes, one no, one absent. Think that's too many.
And the answer is?
No worries.
Well, I know that's why I read it.
It is five yes, one no, one absent.
Sure. Thank you. Anybody else consent calendar? Counselor, well, very minded on the top of page seven, appearing at the end of the first sentence. Very important to pay attention to your first teacher in school. All right? Anything? Not that else? Counselor Riesman? Yes? No, I'm sorry. Counselor Riesman? All right, thank you. Anything for the other agenda items? Anybody who want to pursue your earlier inquiry, Counselor Riesman, on the other agenda items?
No.
Okay. All right, and anything for council business? I have two items that I'll bring up later for council business. One is the revolving gavel and the other is ignite the light. Is anything we want else to add to the council business at this time? None appearing. I'm going to ask this unlit to come forward and her or her, if you would turn your mic on, introduce yourself and proceed with the program that you have lined up for us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'd like to welcome Mountview Middle School's sixth grade students and their parents. For the past five years, John and Wolf are here. And I have been going into the sixth grade classes and doing a planning program that we call Zine Star. And this has largely been cultivated over the years through Mountview Middle School. We also go to C.S. Lewis for the this year and last year. And we've gone to Jay Lee Land Valley Middle School for all five years as well. So we go into the schools and we give our presentation showing new work from the ground up and we talk about how cities organize, why it's organized, where it is, and talk about things every city needs and wants and have different parts of neighborhood. And then we give them an assignment and let them be developers. And we've chosen two vacant parcels in the city. One is across from City Hall. They have vacant parcel next to the post office. The other is vacant parcel south of the Allison Hotel, the Spring Rock Road. So two very different parcels. And we asked them to be developers and think about what neighborhood needs or wants and kind of impacts those developments might have, but to come up with something. And so tonight, we have six of those presentations. And I'd like to welcome Mr. Willing and Mr. Alfred. They're both here. They're sixth grade teachers and very involved in the process over the years.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council, and Jessica and Jan.
Mr. Willing, I'm gonna have to ask you to use the mic, not because we can't hear you, but because this is a recorded session and we need you to be able to pick it up by using the mic. Thank you.
I think I heard it all. Am I coming through now? Ah, good. Okay. I'll start over again. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for having us here tonight. And thank you again to Jessica and Jan for the support they have given our students. I'll apologize for my little outburst over the period at the end of the sentence. I love that. And some of the excitement of my students has rubbed off on me tonight, so I would feel forgive me for that. The project has been a wonderful one for developing a sense of community among our students. They talk about the various issues that come before new people and think about needs and wants, and they come out of it with a much more realistic view of just what a community can and can't do when they have decisions to make about a vacant parcel of land. So without any further ado, I'd like to bring up my first presenters. And they are, here we are, the Fishbird Project, featuring the Aquarium of Life.
I would like for you to imagine if you had a piece of land and you could do whatever you want to do. That's what we get to do this year for our Zine Star project. This is Yuka, Valerie, Cameron, and I and you. And we have the idea to build the Aquarium of Life on the Spring Rock property. Building the Aquarium of Life would create a new source of entertainment for citizens and communities. It would also be a great entertainment. And the city could supply the water that the aquarium would need to keep it in its heart. The Aquarium of Life would also be a big job supplier to the unemployed. Overall, this aquarium will meet many of the needs of the community, but this will also involve some. To construct the aquarium, we would have the level off the ground where the buildings are going to be and reason that trees and different locations. We build a big dome that would have two stories and a basement. The basement would have a tunnel leading into the old schoolhouse, which would be made into the sign-in. We built another sign-in and one on the other side of the future lane. And we built tunnels leading up to gift shops and entertainment and a rental. The building from your cover area leading up to a small dome, which would be floor away gate. It would give back on all the animals that live in the floor. We built paths leading to this small pond that we would build that would show off some pond fish and be a nice, be a nice picnic area. We would add scenery and make this place more relaxed. This would supply, this would make many needs positive and negative with it.
The Aquarium of Life will supply a lot of fun for the city members, but the construction will cause some noise and traffic. What we were planning to ask for maybe a date to work, bill costs is quite a bit to make the aquarium, but overtime will repay construction cost if the money will be made from the aquarium. And it'll also provide employment to people who work in the aquarium and people to build the aquarium.
So if we can aquarium of life, we hope will make very much fun and joyful memories for you and your children and your grandchildren and so on. And we use great tourist attraction and provide lots of needs and wants to the neighborhood. That's why we think we need to build the Aquarium of Life. Any questions?
The people who asked for any questions from the council. You've either convinced us or confused us. Thank you.
Our next presenters are, oh, Nalani, I hope you'll forgive me for pronouncing your last name, Nalani Yoc.
Yoc.
And Sarah Hess, Omar Mejia, and Fortune Brewer for Jungle Experience Biosphere. Okay, side note on these guys, two of their team are not here. I asked them if they wanted to go ahead and fill in the pieces because they know their stuff even if they don't know the speech, and they said yes.
Welcome. We're glad you're here today. We would like to present a biosphere called Jungle Experience. Kids would get to camp out with all the necessary tools and supplies such as tents, food, and flashlights. They would get to have fun and explore. Now, there would be monoculars to help them have more fun while they're exploring. They're prepared to make sure their kids are safe because they've been watching them. Now, if you were to do that, they would be relaxing, but the parents would also have to be supervising all of them.
We need natural resources to build our, our jungle experience biosphere, like animals, birds, rocks, trees, birds, and a bunch of other animals. We need the animal specialists to inform the people who is visiting to what they know about the animal behavior. And as you can see, there is a lake where people can fish, and there's a river where people can go kayaking, river kayaking, and we run right here, represent the line. And as you can see, there are five little squares here that are animal cages for the
These would present different features, like different effects, good effects. There would be huge effects because it would produce jobs, but then again, it might also take away jobs from the animal.
Lots of people want to know negative and positive things about. Many families want to see what all jungle is like. So this would be a great business for the neighborhood to see what jungle is like.
We would also like to put out there, no designated spots, so you can camp out wherever you want. Like you don't, like some, some places you have to go to a specific spot and camp, but here you can just camp wherever you want. Now, we would like, the park tomorrow will be here, that way you could just walk in and go up to the main office right here, trek in and just go in, and then you'd be able to get all the supplies, supplies you would need. We would love for anyone to come to the Jungle Experience. You don't have to be a tourist to come either. You are able to just have fun and go camping. And we would also like to point out the fact that you are able to, like there are biking paths too, so you could do pretty much what you could do in a jungle with added stuff. Thank you.
I have a question for you before you leave. Yes. Saying, I think Counselor Riesman has one also, so we'll let him ask his question first.
Well, I especially like the idea of having a river to kayak. If you have the camping experience in cabin where you want, could you have a campfire roast marshmallows and make s'mores there?
At my cousin's firehouse.
Well said.
You may have said it and I may have missed it. Where do you have your restroom facilities?
Well. Um.
Where are the trees?
There are bathrooms. There's a girls' and boys' bathroom, but there's about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight spots you're able to go to the bathroom.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Bacon?
That's me.
What kind of animals do you have there and are they roaming loose while I'm trying to sleep?
No, they'll be caged and they'll be like fish, birds, like pit lions, and big cats like jaguars and hawkies and monkeys. Fire monkeys.
Thank you again.
Well done. Our next presentation is The Nature Preserve with co-alternator Michael Perkins, Isaac Otkie, and Grayson Suss.
A nature preserve is a place where nature is reserved and to name nature. We will also take in sick animals and let you, let the public watch them as they are nursed back to health. The biggest reason we chose a nature preserve is because we found more positives than negatives, like the possible school field trips and good landscaping. I hope you like the rest of our proposals to come.
At this nature preserve, we will learn many things about the world, all that value and new book area. This nature preserve will have a specific on new book worldwide, and there will be many, there are nature preserves around the open natural areas, but not the specific reserves with more invaluable nature preserve. Any nature preserve will have many things, including a lake, forest, grassland, and gold box that go in and around the nature preserve. We will also have an information center for their gift shop. And people can go get presents to all of these new book areas.
Mr. Willing, I'd like to interrupt for just a moment. Would you check and make sure the mic is on, please?
It is not. Do you like this restart? My apologies.
There are positives and negatives about the nature preserve. What there is, it's done, it will cost money to do. We don't need to have materials for the stores, there'll be water and water and fish for the party. But a good thing is we'll make neighborhood look good and we'll provide jobs for anybody. This will make people come here and live here and have better jobs. And it will also be educational for all of our schools. Do you see why we want this nature preserve?
We'll need money and supplies to build this nature preserve. The garden will need to, we'll need supplies to build this bigger school, we build it so we can make it into our business center. We'll need money for making a pond and fishing and dipping so we can put those in there in the pond. We'll need money for, wait, no. Here. We also need to dig a pond, that means we'll need a pair of, we need quite a few resources for this, but we still think it'd be a great idea for the city and because of all the positives that come out of our nature preserve.
If you didn't catch that, we chose this preserve for many reasons. First, a big idea, this will really tell people about the county. Second, all of the positives, school, field trips, and good landscaping. Lastly, all of the supplies that we own. That is why our proposal is a nature preserve. And now I would like to show you our map.
Well, you're coming here, and this is our service ground for working and building. We will use it to build up school here. Inns are a trail, and the big long one is a paved path for bikes. Our mountain here, at the little things going in and around it. This is the first view. This is the colorful, that's the, and this would be some trees, and a wall for that. Nobody brings them.
Are there any questions? I think not. Good. Thank you.
The next set of three presentations are on the downtown property. The first is Howard, a lovely patch of opportunities that I buy every day. And the first one is Green Wave, a Caribbean experience presented by Dylan Justin, Joel Lily, Luis Camposano, and James Pollen.
Joel. Dylan. And James. And I, Louis. If you're bored and you love Caribbean food and just come over to Green Waves, a restaurant with a tropical theme, we have mini islands and tropical fish. If you can get to ride it here, and if you've never had experience, good, we'll teach you. It's one for the whole family in the world. If you can get to fish and the monk, if you're not satisfied, we even got a king's. Green Waves is a restaurant for the Caribbean theme and food, where people can relax and enjoy seafood while soothing music comes on. This restaurant has an island in the middle of a pool of water where food will be served and has shores of sand, ice beach. By the way, this is part of the pool of swimming to tell the world the little place of the Green Waves has the word green in the title because all of our water that we use is filtered and used again. Green Waves has much more to be announced than just a restaurant and fish and water, et cetera, et cetera. Yes, much more to do at Green Waves. We need Green Waves if you want to have a nice non-fast food restaurant in Newbury. This is it. Green Waves will be a nice dinin' restaurant. Newbury does not have a walk-in and sit-down kind of restaurant, but it will be one of the best restaurants in the state. If you're bored and want some good food, then just come down to Green Waves, the only place in Newbury that has its own Caribbean restaurant, that has real seafood cooked or not cooked. This is good because Newbury is not now a seafood restaurant anywhere. So come on down, it's open for the whole family, you can do that. See, this is Green Waves. Do you think we don't need it? Let's think again. Green Waves is for you. We have a psychopath. You need Green Waves and we need Green Waves. So think. So what do you think? Real food or artificial food? Green Waves is a place for you and me. Think how happy the climate will be with over sixty jobs going back to state order. And questions? Nobody?
Counselor Howard, please. So will you be dining on the island or can you dine around the island?
You dine on the island.
You will dine on the island like nurture, take you off.
Then I might bury both then?
Yeah.
No, I think they answered it. I wanted them to explain their flight plan a little bit, but I think it was answered. I think that's what I care.
What's gonna be the most popular item on the menu?
And chowder.
That would be polished shrimp. So long as you like.
Hey. You can't do that. You need to sit down or stand still.
Good. Way to go. And I'm okay with seafood and shell, I think they're really good, guys. Our next, our next presentation is Many More, a toy store by Jacob Bose, Aranibara, Adrian Portillo, and Isaiah Fissin. Tell them. And one correction, we are missing Isaiah tonight, so these guys are gonna tip right up and go.
Welcome to Many More, the most one you have in years. Our toy stores do not last, last long, but that is gonna change by making excellent toys and having a safe and fun environment. Now, the things for the fun environment will have air hockey, pool tables, foosball, and laser tag. On the first floor, we're gonna have the toy store and some headshot toy, if you like it or not. On the second floor, there's gonna be laser tags, food ball, a little place to play, air hockey, and yeah. Kids can come over and have fun with this. On the second floor, kids can come over and ease and have a fun time. And also, on the second floor, there's gonna be laser tag. Finally, we need to offer great service and a nice time in the state. There's a lot of positive impacts that our toy store will make on Newbury, but our main one is to make people happy. Kids can go to the store and buy toys, take them home and play with them for them for a while, so that the parent, they don't ask the parents to go to the park. So that the parent, um, they don't ask the parents to go to the park. So the parents aren't, you know, like, oh, like same people going through the walkover, oh, I don't wanna waste some money, oh, I don't wanna take the drive to Wilsonville. Well, you can have those toys right there in your living room to play with for a long, decent time. And it's not a, a long driveway to the, the area of Newburgh, so. Now you know what Many More is all about. It'll, it'll have safe environment, like I said, and have all the excellent toys that every kid in a built world will love. Now, now, uh, now, now you, like Adrian said, it will have, it will have everything that parents want, you can drive it far, far away, and you could have a great time.
Counselor Howard? So are you guys gonna make the toys yourselves and, and then sell toys that you guys make? Or are they gonna be toys that you can get at other places too?
Uh, it'll be like toys, well, the reason we're naming it Many More is because it's toys all around the world where like, you know, kids want some toys they've never seen before.
And you can, you can try them out before you buy them there, that's cool.
Any other questions? There's some questions in the back. I see two hands back there, please stand and ask your question. Over here.
Okay. Um, so like, you know how prison is coming up? What if like the parents are getting something up, they don't know if they live life, and like then the kids try it out, but then they know it's really criminal.
There's another hand that is up there.
Um, what do you miss? Um, it's whatever, well, I guess it depends on the size of the toy. And I guess, uh, I guess the, I guess the small ones would probably be, I guess the small, uh, small things they play with are probably the, never much, never about to price me for something. And the dead, I guess the dead ones could be like, uh, search or something.
We have another question up here in the front row.
Um, would, would you also have video games? Electronics?
We have a section for, um, game console and video games.
We have two more questions, one on the front row and one over here.
What kind of equipment are you gonna use if I was a child? Like any other laser tag, right? Laser, laser tag, of course, and, yes, and a sword.
Young lady over here, please.
Okay, so you said you were having that, um, the laser tag, the foosball in the pool court of the same place. If you're having laser tag with those two things, how exactly would that fit?
It's, it's two stories, so it's kinda, laser tag won't be as big, but it'll be as fun though. And on the side of it, it'll be most, it'll be next to the bathroom area. It's not gonna be very much, it's kinda gonna be like a, uh, food court and mall kind of.
And I think we have one more question up here.
I know a lot of other businesses didn't have this, but other fire aid stores in your business.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is One of a Kind by Brooklyn Scram, Josie Dewey, Zach Irving, and Cole Rose.
We would like to introduce you to the masterminds behind Mountain View Middle School's sixth grade design star project for First and Howard Street. Our little plan consists of Brooklyn, Josie, Zach, and Cole. We propose to create a restaurant that would not only serve American food, but five other foreign foods as well. Sometimes the citizens of Newburgh think that we need to make something that Newburgh needs, but sometimes Newburgh needs what Newburgh wants. They are feeling a little complicated and indecisive, and your wallet doesn't exactly qualify for your move. Well, quit waiting around and come on over to One of a Kind. Having a totally awesome restaurant definitely has upside, but also downside. Examples of downside to be given is when people are in one direction or direction. If lots of people want Mexican food at night, I would deny someone, or even be denied myself. Another reason may be if the restaurant becomes popular, younger men come over and try it. In my opinion, that sounds the best for them for children. Whether it's success, maybe everyone's calling ahead. Obviously, that means a win, say a lot of people can eat at a restaurant. Like I said before, they're upside as well. An example of wanting to be, no matter what you want, you know you'll get it at a restaurant. There isn't just one upside or one downside, there is more. It's a rare few, and I hope you work through the upside and come and down to one of a kind. It really is one of a kind. I believe you really need one of a kind, because it is right. Have you ever been to a restaurant that's just a foreign food? Have you ever tried to yell at the end of the same thing? I don't like that place. We want to have an award with one of a kind, and we for everyone. A party to celebration for just now for June, One of a Kind is a great city. People will want to come to our restaurant because we have interesting foreign foods. Our music and wall painting make you feel like you're really in a foreign country. Visit our two floors, like restaurants each in their separate environment. We are also proud, by the way, so if you don't have the money to buy someone and eat their food, well. As you can see, One of a Kind is a great experience in the state of Denver. Not only do we have great food, but we have the right, Mexican, Italian, Chinese, you name it. I'm not gonna say if you all come to me or decide or why no one anywhere else, although I will say that I believe our restaurant, One of a Kind, would be great for the First and Howard Street property.
Are you ever in the groove for something new?
I, uh, wanted to have one. You're gonna have those? Okay, I see, yeah, so you make, you make me interested. Thank you, and thanks to all of you for coming in. Ah, we have time.
I have a couple of comments.
Ah-ha!
On the top floor, we'll have the kitchen, the storage, and that's, and elevators, of course. Below the kitchen floor, there will be, uh, dinaries, seating and dinners, and also bathrooms and elevators. The bottom floor, we'll also have the main entrance, and the table will be shared with everyone. From our, we'll have a quality food line time, and we'll rent a table, so. And we'll have, um, an underground parking lot, um, so, any questions?
Counselor Reagan?
If, if I want Italian and my husband wants Chinese, we have to sit at the restaurant. We can sit together, it's good.
I see a hand in the back, would you please, rise?
What on the kitchen, what on the kitchen do you want when you're cooking?
Kitchen is on the top floor. Kitchen will be on the top floor, that's where, um, all the chefs and chefs, they will prepare the food. And that's so.
I have two questions on the front row, starting here and here.
Why do you have the kitchen on the top floor? We have probably been here, so people might walk into the restaurant and walk into the kitchen. Or if they go upstairs, they'll walk into the kitchen. So if they're on the top floor, no one would have to go in.
There's one more over here in the green chair.
I will send the transporting food.
They will transport the food by a little cart, single wheel through them, and then they'll be elevated.
I see another hand on the front row.
I was just going to say that with the tower on the top, kinda looks like the General Paulson.
There's a hand in the back.
How will orders get to the chefs? Is it like those things that go up or do the people who take the orders go up down the elevator?
Well, we have three things up that we find, there's the waiter to, um, pass, to, 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 to.
I think that's it for the questions, we thank you very much. All of these presentations, the great presentations, go ahead.
Thank you very much, um, I just wanna let you know how much of a privilege I consider it to, one, work with these great kids from this community. And to be recognized, uh, by this body and the people who work in the city, that's really great. There are two people who aren't here tonight who really deserve mention. They are Hannah Bryant and Linda Buck, my, uh, mics and my two co-teachers over at Mountain View. Um, this is not a one adult operation, it takes a lot of us to make it happen. Uh, it's well worth it for the kids, and we appreciate that, so thank you for having us.
Well, I think we're blessed to have the kids take this interest in, in what's going on in the community and starting to develop things. Thank you and your co-teachers for your efforts on this, and we thank staff also for the work that you have put in on this. I've seen this now twice, and each time I learn a little bit more, so thank you for helping me get a better idea of what you're talking about. Any further comments, uh, Counselor Ryerson?
Oh, Mr. Marison, so we have somebody. Marison, I'd like to remind you all of, well.
All right, anything else? Thank you all very much. You certainly. Now, we're, we're, we're.
Not you guys, just mine.
Take what we can give, yes. Yes, thank you all for coming.
Hand, please.
Hello?
Okay. Have a good night. I think she got that one. Fighting a fist?
Right.
Have a good night.
I'm eating my cock.
Bro, isn't that awesome? That's cool. Come on, it's me, Brayden, out here. There he is. How come he didn't get one?
There's someone standing there already.
Nah! Oh no, the cops are back there on!
You have to get them leaving.
Maybe they test them or something.
Probably, huh? Watch out for trucks backing up, stay in the grass, please, Andrew. That was fun, huh?
That's cool.